It's PM. Most of the people. I mean, five thirty.
I'm looking at it. What creatures have had?
I know. We're gonna start with the. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it stands. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. We'll start with Detective Beagans, followed by the.
Mayor, our flags are in the, in the council chambers for the next budget. We will have them in here and then we'll have the.
Detective Beagans, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where wisdom stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
We will start with, um, we have a quorum. Ms. Morrison Menes, Ms. Jessica Green, Ms. Theaxis Marukin, Mr. Donald C., Mr. Mario Morones, and myself, Ray Norris, and Mayor. And then we have, we have your water, and then Mr. Johnson is here, and.
Thank you, Mayor, if I may. Uh, we will start our proposed budget for twenty twenty, twenty four, twenty twenty-five. I'm sorry, ma'am.
I was gonna say, you can introduce that.
I appreciate that. We will be discussing the Water Department and the Wastewater Department funds. Uh, with us today are David Anoye, he is our Public Works Director. To my right is David Painter. David Painter is a wastewater superintendent. And then Keith Mayberry is our water supervisor. So they have sat with the Finance Director and I and gone through this budget and, uh, talked about the things that they need to. So there was extensive work done by the staff to get us to where we are right now. And, uh, we will start with Water Fund two-two-one. Our Finance Director is on her way and, uh, you're fine. I know that you've, you've got other things working on, so. We are at the Water Fund budget. How she did it last year is she goes to highlighting, uh, the various categories of where there is an increase or a decrease in this year's budget as compared to last. And then we'll spend some time talking about the capital improvements in the waterfront and in the wastewater fund, so. Ms. term, let me.
If you want, you want.
Okay, so I'm gonna start on with the revenues. For the revenues for water and commercial, I am projecting, I'm increasing that by five percent just based off of current item pipeline for growth. Um, Andy, I've sat down and we're, we're, we're confident with the five percent increase in the residential cells and the commercial cells. Um, overall for services, we are looking to increase total revenue by ninety-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Then in the miscellaneous, I am looking to increase that by four thousand dollars. And that's due to interest that we're earning currently in our Texas class for the waterfront. So in total, overall, we will do a four percent, um, increase on revenue in water and it'll be an increase of ninety-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. So total revenue, um, budgeted would be two million, five hundred, ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Do you have any questions with the revenue?
You said ninety-six thousand, seven, six?
Twenty-five, that was what I'm increasing it for next year.
So, I'm sorry. And I'm not looking at the same thing you're looking at, looking at your revenue summary that you have?
Yes.
Your water meter connections, you have a minus fourteen point twenty.
Yes, yes, that's right here. Um, currently, because we did a hundred and seventy-five, I'm lowering that to a hundred and fifty based off of this, uh, past fiscal year. I don't know how quick we are gonna be building these new homes. Uh, maybe I was too aggressive on that number last year, so I wanted to lower it to one fifty because I know there are new, so, you know.
And so that.
Yes.
That offsets the five percent increase you talked about with revenue?
Correct, yes.
How did that offset that?
Because that's a negative fourteen, but then, um, I increased, uh, reconnection fees from twenty-two-five to twenty-seven-five. Uh, so that increase there was roughly ten percent. So when you do the, uh, average.
So, question about, so this current year, the budget, twenty-five hundred for overall, for the total of funds. This says projected.
Don't look at the projected, that's something again.
Like it was doing last year, it's kind of.
Yes, and it, and it, we got it fixed, but not on the report that gives you the actual year date. And I have to provide you an actual year-to-date figure. Uh, so we're working on getting it corrected on this report. We got it corrected, but just not on this.
But you're confident we're, we're where we need to be? You didn't put into your actual end-of-year projection for?
Yes, yes.
Why are you projecting an increase in reconnection services? On. You said that's only at ten percent.
Yes, so if you look on over, I guess you're here, and we're currently at eighteen-five, um, just based off of the new services that we're actually connecting based off of services that we have made, I guess disconnecting and reconnecting. Yeah, I'm just discussing. And trying to do a, a medium. Yeah, in twenty-two, twenty-three is twenty-five-four. And then year today is eighteen-five. Yes. Well, this is only through May, though. So the twenty, the eighteen-five is just through May. Okay.
Too small for me.
Do you need one, too? You're good? I have your most. Oh, I know.
Thank you. Yes, during COVID, and then we had, you know, the hardships and people's, um, tax breaking and having weeks, and we did this program. Remember, sir, it was like this sort of program that we put in place about.
Y'all approved it at the council level and it was implemented there then.
But it was just for that time period?
Yes, ma'am.
And I guess, I don't know if this is a question for you, to me, if there are, um, individuals that are continuing to struggle with reconnecting fees, late fees, things like that, to where I'm not saying that there needs to be a program, or maybe there is some sort of consideration for assistance for individuals. I know there's community action that they can help, but if there was something else, would the city?
We have nothing in place at this time, but you, you stated, Ms. Andrea up at the office works with community action and she tries to solicit as many assistance programs for the people that, that need them. And it's something that the city council.
Right, real, because sometimes community actions are.
Yeah, and they have limited, yeah, they do have limited, because I'll run out and I'll say, well, I don't think.
So that was the first resource they used and then they hit the limit, then maybe there's some sort of program. And I don't know, it's just an idea.
Okay.
You know, for our community, because I know that is technically a source of argument for us, reconnection fees, but at the hardship of citizens. And I'm not saying it's an every single time thing, maybe like if they're once. Once a year.
Yeah, once a.
We do have, um, we do have forgiveness for when, you know, once enough for, not, not more than one time. Once a year, if they go real, you know, go high, I know the city does work. They do justify. Where they get a discount and, or else they can make payments. So we do have the.
Or if it's like a, you know, like a church facility or something, you know, where there's a bunch of pipes and they didn't know, it's not a, a building that's frequenting every day. I don't know. And those issue revisions have happened before and we, the city.
But they call.
Yeah, and I do know, I do know that there, you know, people have said, you know, the cities work with them, but.
But I can't get an Andrea to see about a list.
Solidify something. So is that what you're saying, like once a year, they're going to stop?
Yeah, you know. Because if it's the policy of the city to work with the, you know, a resident, you know, okay, they can do it this time, maybe, you know, there's hardship and they're not able to pay again, but the city said, well, we tried to, what did you? Just to exhaust all avenues for them.
And we have resources.
Mm-hmm.
Also.
And may, and maybe that's just it, like, just to say the city puts those resources out.
You're in the process, ma'am, uh, and I think that's a good idea, council, and then this is maybe at the twenty-fifth, I think is our next meeting, that we have Ms. Andrea here to present on how she handles stuff like that, but when it is available, we can be, we can present that and then if the city council still chooses to expand that, then we can look at the recommendations. You got that, ma'am? Thank you.
Is something like that? Dogs, the babies, something like that?
Yeah, they, they round up the dollar. You can't even, no, or you can or you don't have to.
But when you can't pay?
They, I mean, I've heard they, I, I mean, I've never heard of them utilizing, but I think they do.
Supposed to help.
Oh, yeah.
I know they use community actions as well, but on top of that, I don't know if that'd be internally assisted.
Page two is expenses, these are expenses for administration. So administration expenses are each of the parks in the front, they're actually split between admin, water, and wastewater. And then here at City Hall, myself, Finance, Andy, Monica, Margaret, Evelyn, um, Dino. But are split three ways, so we come out of this as well. We're split out of, uh, water admin, wastewater admin, and, uh, general administration. So, um, we're not going over salaries, we do that all together as one, so I'm not going over that now, but.
I have a question about salaries. Is the increase due to the COVID?
Oh, I, well, I'm not, we're not gonna talk about salaries this one, so, but yeah. But yes, but that is, yes. So we'll, we'll do a workshop just for salaries. So supplies and materials, I'm increasing eighty-one dollars. Equipment bill maintenance is decreasing by two thousand. Department materials is gonna increase by, oh, sorry, yeah, to, uh, one thousand. That is gonna increase by a thousand, um, animal control. We need to do some updates to the current facilities that we have. And then for the scooter control, I'm trying to each year add about five hundred every year because we actually need a lot more than that, um, to spray as much as we need to. Um, so you'll see that just at the trend across every department on, on the scooter control. For utilities, that's increasing three hundred and seventy-one dollars. For contractual, that's gonna, uh, decrease by roughly eighteen hundred dollars. And then enterprise, the capital outlay, that's our enterprise fleet vehicles. Um, there's no change on that. We, we have not received the vehicles in the time that we thought we had yet. They, they say they're right there, but we haven't. So I'm leaving that the same because we actually haven't even touched it this year, so.
Did you ever start receiving vehicles?
We've received, um, one, we've received one here and one for, um, parks and, and one for streets. Uh, but there are currently five at the actual view.
So they're not taking them?
They're getting outfitted, um, with the life that, that they need for the guys outside. It just takes, taking a while. Um, and then for the other, it is decreasing by four thousand, three hundred dollars. Uh, that decrease there is due to us decreasing actually our transfer out to the general fund and also just decreasing our principal payments across the bond payments. Um, Andy and I have discussed, we're trying to get it to where the general, general fund does stand alone and is not dependent on these transfer outs of these funds. So our goal is just to keep decreasing it each year and where hopefully in the future it will be out.
Every fund will be self-sustaining and that's something on our, uh, budgeting, on our finance plan that we wanna do to make sure that we're not having to borrow from this, uh, fund to fund another one. And they're standalone, then we're being, uh, even more physically responsible on the stuff that we need to, so.
Is that even legal or just really restricted?
Yeah, no, it, it's.
Just really restricted?
Yeah. We're hoping that as we move forward and we grow, uh, more water connects, there's more wastewater connects and double that will sustain this fund and then the general fund.
Yeah, just like the EDC director had said, more rooftop, more of this.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
What contract services do we pay for five thousand five hundred? On the.
Okay, so we.
Previous, please?
Yes.
And two?
It's five thousand five hundred. Um, currently paid sixteen hundred, so during elect, not how much, during, um, different times of year, we've had roles working in the front, come help work out in the front. Um, I actually just had Randy, a guy that is very, um.
First.
In code first, yes, like whatsoever, in, in code. Uh, he comes and actually looks and makes sure that, um, everything is actually hitting in the right buckets. So I tell him areas that I thought, hey, can you look at this? And he did come for three days.
So it's more like salaries or?
Um, yeah, just.
Contract pay?
Contract pay. Yes, yes.
And the audit, that's a third-party professional that, remember, there's everybody else?
Correct, that's the, the Liao Carter.
Okay.
And then I did, um, I am keeping that at twenty-five, so like every year's something different, but we will have, um, to have a single audit, so that's mine.
And those are on any USDA stuff that we have, correct, we gotta have a single audit?
Yes, yes. And then, um, overall, for just the admin expenses, we are increasing that by forty-five thousand and that's roughly four percent. I'm going to the Water Department, which is page four, so you know, for the guys outside. Again, we're not gonna discuss salaries today, but for, um, supplies and materials, increasing three hundred and seventy-five dollars. For equipment, building maintenance, there's no change there. For department materials, it's decreasing fifteen thousand, five hundred. Uh, that's due to the hospital, um, well, I am, uh, bringing that down. The current budget was thirty-five thousand, uh, that was just due to the repairs and to get it to where it needed to be. And so this next year, I don't foresee as many, we don't foresee as many expenses at for the hospital well. And then for utilities, that will increase by seventy-five dollars. For contractual. Oh, sorry, contractual, um, I'm increasing that by, um, twenty-seven hundred dollars to make it even thirty thousand. And then capital outlay, that is increasing by thirty-three thousand. Overall, just for the Water Department, it will increase by roughly four percent, which is fifty-one thousand, five hundred. And then total expenses for the whole, um, Water Fund is increasing ninety-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is roughly four percent. And then for the two hundred thousand capital outlay, I would keep, speak on what we're looking at that for the two hundred thousand.
You wanna look at, at what you're talking about?
Yes, when we got a back truck that we use daily and often, um, with delivery, service needs, uh, sewers, um, we use that daily, um, as much as possible. And then the next and the most important thing to me is the well grounding. Uh, at, um, our wells, we have zero grounding. So whenever it's, uh, a bad rain, a bad, bad lightning storm, first of July, fourth, I was there because breakers trip. So we need to get wells grounded ASAP. So, uh, that's one big thing that we need to address soon. And, uh, sewer machine, we got a sewer machine that we use for residential. We do have our big back truck, but we use that for our main line, that does, that cannot go on residential, it's too big. Um, and this is why I'm saying the sewer machine, because we already, we placed a pump four times. So it was just a matter of times, how many times I'm gonna send it to the shop to get fixed and get fixed and get fixed. Where I can just trade it in and get something that I know and it's coming to work. So that's why I have basically a couple of them.
And Katie, you looked at a sewer machine that you've, uh, you're needing and you found that that you like?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you tell us the difference in, uh, the ones that you prefer? Why you picked that?
I picked that one because it's, it's pretty much the same as one we have now and it lasts a while. Just, it's a different pump, newer pump, new motors, new hoses, uh, less wear and tear, less breaking parts that gotta be fixed monthly. Less risk fees and stuff like that. So I really believe that I choose, I chose that one. I can't go too big because it has to go in residential and it can't go over like fifteen hundred because we have had accidents before where the pressure's up too high and it goes back in residence house. So we can't have that, we don't need that, so that's why I kinda stayed with that one because I can't have too much pressure going to service line.
Keith, and it's a new one, right?
Yes, it's gonna be.
A brand new one?
It's gonna be, yes.
He was able to get that price because we're trading in the old and they're taking the old one and then that, uh, that'll be the offset on the funds that we have to come up with.
And who PMCS is this?
Uh, Kenlock, it's Kenlock out of San Antonio.
And is that like hourly and monthly?
Uh, it's running hourly, uh, our back truck, which we have that way, that's every two hundred hours, the on a sewer machine, it'll probably get the same thing by two hundred hours, then we'll get them serviced. Or if we have any problems, we can just give them a call. So they do that and, um, top on weekly, every forty hours, stuff needs to be greased and we do that personally. We got a guy that's designated for the truck and also me that oversee the, I can run the truck, I do run them. Um, so I also oversee and grease them too.
Okay, good, because you know, a lot of people want to skip that.
Oh, no, no. No, and we also have, uh, like, uh, a daily sheet, so when you drive that truck and you check that truck out, it should be done, not, it's on you for not getting it done. So it's not one of those things where it goes weeks and weeks and months and months and no checks because, once again, like I said, this is stuff we use daily.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So.
Well, we're half military here, so that's what we were supposed to be doing.
But one of the best things is that, that, that the, uh, staff is very appreciative of the council and the ability for them to get new equipment. Back when I was here the first time, that was limited, yeah, so. The new stuff that they've been getting, they know that, uh, it has to last, so they're taking care of it.
And the priorities that are growing, it's just.
But the, um, like the, some of the, though, is the ask, so they are all performing the maintenance program. Yeah, so they come and they.
And that's something that, that's been implemented correctly, is that any piece of equipment that we buy large, uh, we include the maintenance package in it, so.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned your, they need grounding. Is there, I mean, other than that, other than small little things, like, do you feel that our wells are in pretty good standing right now? Talk to me about B Street.
B Street's the best one, honestly, B Street is, it just needs to be grounded. It's really hospital and plaza, it's, uh, they need every, uh, every, everyators.
Yes.
And so we wanna get those done as soon as possible because I know it's, uh, a big deal with, uh, like, spilling water or bad water. And the best way to accomplish that is aviation and flushing. So we do do our flushing, but aviation will help out tremendously. And an everyator is, is really, really old. And we're looking into that right now and that done.
Yes, and what would be the process of that, because, I mean, do we have funding to do that piece, or is that gonna?
One of the everyators is getting in the process right now, we're already, it's on our capital of two years, so we're just working with, me and David are working with contractors to get in there and trying to find the right price, uh, to get that done and get that up as soon as possible.
And that would be for hospital?
That would be for hospital. And then I'm assuming, hoping, make sure we can do, uh, plazas, everyator. Uh, and grounding, I wanna get that as soon as possible.
And that would be for all of them?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Keith, and let me do.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Keith, and the money, oh, the, the money is in the capital plan already, you have that money for those islands?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
One of the things, Mayor, is, and this for the council's information, is that, uh, you did bid, that you did post to, to accept bids on that and we received one. And we had a meeting actually today to follow up, that, uh, the job is kinda small for a lot of the contractors, so we're having to be creative with how we're gonna try to get somebody to work on that, am I correct, sir?
Yes, sir, I'm in the process of finding somebody to, to work on that, wait for some contacts, I'm also working with three on that, so we're looking to get something done soon so we can get that area out of the hospital.
One of the things, ma'am, is, and you're aware of, on the USDA project, on the, the wells that were done, the DUA that was done, and then the work that was done on these other ones, we had already purchased the, the area itself, right? We're looking at the installation, as we.
Any other questions for water? Oh, yes. Would you budget enough to your pipelines when you need to?
Yes, we got more than our, um, pipes and tiddies. Yes, there's a bit on that, yes.
And then if you have, uh, the capital, you're figuring out to for water for that?
Yeah.
I don't know what all they wanna start trying to do, what we want to be.
I meant like, uh, not as private as having a, like, a.
Oh, day, oh, yes, oh, yeah, 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 yes.
Because did, did breaks due to rise, did that take a chunk out of our?
Yes.
I don't know my job.
But then they, we actually built one and they gave us. Yes, and so we've, uh, been putting it back into our, that expense sign, because it was covering that in the man hours.
So as soon as rise hits something, something comes up with rise. Everybody's me and I invoice the man hours, who was there, what was both, how much the cap was. So I built them everything, uh, that day and we send it out to David and Cindy and they get it right to him. I get it to him ASAP. I don't want to.
Talking about, I was not involving rise.
Yes, and normal, yeah.
We're in the middle of summer right now.
Right, it's labor and season.
I just wanna make sure we didn't spend money out of our budget to.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then like currently, so for pipes and connections, you do on page four, when there's ninety-six thousand, we're only year-to-date base at twenty-two, so to announce the name.
Yes, I'll fix a big order today, too.
Yes, so.
And then we're gonna do some more in-house projects too, uh, as far as products. Uh, get the old cast iron, um, pipe cast iron and. So we just not, uh, trying to get that out of the system as soon as possible.
And are you still finding mines, too?
Yes, yes.
We're gonna map that out.
We'll map it in as we go. I'm mapping it on my GRS as we go. So I take my film notes, I go to the office and put it and put down the address and where it's at.
If I had those minds, it'd be, man, that'd be awesome.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions on that. I don't have any, I don't have any questions.
You can go to wastewater then, the which's two-two-two. So for wastewater, for revenues, um, if you go down to line five, it says wastewater residential. So the current budget is nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, we're gonna increase that to a million and twenty. And then for commercial cells, it's eight hundred and forty thousand, we're gonna increase that to eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred. It's roughly five percent as well. Overall, for those revenues, we're just gonna increase it fifty-five thousand, two hundred, which is three percent. If you go down to miscellaneous, you will see there is a large increase, it's three hundred fifty-two thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. The reason for that increase is I am putting in there a reserve balance draw. This is just based off of, once we get to capital outlay, we'll explain why. This would be the max that we would look to take from the reserve. They usually close with a surplus of about two hundred thousand, so I don't foresee it actually being that much. But, you know, we do have to have a balanced budget. So overall, it's going to increase four hundred seven thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars, which is a twenty percent increase. But again, that's just due to recent large purchases that we need to do and project. And then just so you are comfortable, I want to let you know, I did bring from last audit for the wastewater for sewer. So just in like cash, we have two million dollars currently. That, again, that's just cash, but overall, our net position is four point three million in the water fund. And that was in the reserve as of nine thirty twenty-three. Page two, this is the administration for wastewater. So we'll go to the second section, supplies and materials, we're going to increase about nineteen hundred dollars. For the equipment building maintenance, there's no increase there. For mosquito control, the department materials increased by five hundred. Utilities, we're going to decrease by about a thousand dollars. For the contractual, we're going to decrease by roughly seven thousand. And that decrease there is roughly from the legal fees. For capital outlay, there's no increase. I love that the same for the, and again, that's for the enterprise, our vehicles. And then for other, I'm looking to decrease that by thirty-eight thousand dollars. And that is the transfer out from the general fund. So overall, we're looking to actually decrease the overall budget by seventeen thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars, which is a decrease of two percent. Cindy, I forgot to ask before, we're not needing those credit cards, are we? No, actually, you'll spare the general fund, the revenue of that. So you see the ETS on all these, but the revenue is hitting. The, from the transfer out on the general fund, it decreased thirty-eight thousand. So we're trying to, again, to decrease that every year, so. We aren't seeing those transfer outs. All right, we're going to page four then. These are expenditures for the wastewater department, actual wastewater department, the guys from sewer plant. So for supplies and materials, we're going to just decrease that by roughly a hundred dollars. For equipment building maintenance, there's no change. For department materials, I'm increasing that by about twenty-five hundred dollars.
So Cindy, on that one, how do you separate department materials here, you know, lift stations and stuff? How do you separate that, because we also have that under C I P also?
These are just the, I guess, maintenance, yes, that's it. It's not anything major. If it's major, so anything over five thousand would go into, it would be a capital outlay. For utilities, I am looking to increase that by four thousand dollars and that is, well, it's four thousand eight hundred. And that's the electricity and that's just based off of where I see that we're actually there. And this is again, just due to the electricity for the wells and out of the plant.
I have a question from the previous section, supplies and materials. I noticed that the balance for drug screening is less. Is that because you guys aren't into like screening or why?
I just ended up making it even five hundred. Just maybe five hundred.
The numbers before are a lot higher.
Yes, we've only done seventy-one so far and on those, I mean, there are random, I guess, I don't really know on that. But the, or if there was an accident, they do it roughly less. The only reason I ask is because of the school policies now, like the middle school and the high school, they're going to be drug tested, so I was just making sure you guys were going to stay consistent with the drug testing. If anything changed.
That's correct, no, ma'am. We're going to continue the protocol that we have right now. New hires, anybody that's involved in an accident.
Accidents, I mean, not random, no?
No, we do.
Unless you get an accident.
Well, we do suspension.
Yes, yes. For contractual, there's no change there, I mean, that twenty-five thousand. And then here for capital outlay, it is increasing by four hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Still at home?
Four hundred forty-two thousand.
These are high-ticket items that our wastewater superintendent and the public works director can go, if you want to go over the diffuser and then the MAC roll-off and then we'll go over the C D V G match, so. Go ahead, sir.
So, yeah, so you'll see it's five hundred eighty thousand and this is what it tells, so it'll be a diffuser, right?
Yes. The diffuser, this is something that I've been, we've been needing for a while. This was, this was just an engineer flaw that in the beginning we didn't catch it until we started operating the plant. So our minimum B O is five point oh milligrams per liter deployed, it has to leave the plant for a T C Q permit. So we're averaging about five point two. So the thing is that someone wants to, that we have to fish around to get a B O and that's, that's something that if the inspector comes and sees something like that, it can act as a violation. So this diffuser would be something that we need that will be added to our calling contact chamber that will alleviate that problem. And like I said, it's getting so more of ours as we get, as we start growing bigger and start adding more, more B O Ds to our process, yeah, where we're getting that extra air, so.
So just takes down that road, if we didn't do it, there's also an expense associated with that, right?
Yes.
The fines and stuff are associated with that, non-compliance, yes.
And we will eventually get that, get it to that workup.
I mean, one of those really big ones, bigger things.
For, well, this, like, this is, this is pretty much a blow up with the system that would go through our whole contact chain and just add a few pairs to the contact chain. It's just a blow up, pretty much expensive.
Like Andy, on all this that we're needing to add bigger because we're having, you know, we're adding more houses and homes. Can we pass on the, why are we making our citizens pay for that?
This is something that, that we have to talk about as, as a council. One of the things that we've never done are impact fees, impact fees.
Yeah, we need to do that.
We need to start working on that.
Yeah, and it's still in the works, but we have to kick it up a notch to get work. It's a basic process.
Pushing it and pushing it and pushing it, you know, this should have been in place of this.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Cindy, I had a minute, you started talking about it, in fact, that we reached out to Mr. Sandy.
Yeah, it was emails, of course, phone calls. We'll have to follow up.
I remember we had a conversation with the council.
Yeah.
So that needs to be pushed as soon as.
Especially back before this, this is a story.
We're, I mean, we're getting rope, I mean, because, you know, and they're making millions and millions, so.
We're going to have a good, just for the council's information, we're going to have a good update on the twenty-fifth, the next meeting on all these things that we're talking about, so. I've, we've discussed with engineers how pressing these things are and they, we've got to get on that, so.
And if M and S cannot do it because they're always busy and putting us, you know, we need to find new engineers.
Yes, ma'am.
We need, I mean, they just drag their feet, charge us fourteen thousand, just put the foot in the door. So we need to find people that are going to help us.
Yes, ma'am. The MAC roll-off.
Help our citizens.
Can you go over the MAC roll-off or do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I can go over it, the MAC too. The MAC is a large part of our special disposal process. And we need a thing to get rid of all our sludge versus having to get Republic to come out and make a charge. It's ridiculous.
On what?
Our MAC, our truck for the roll-off to the, to the special disposal. So we just, we're having mechanical issues and engine problems now and I think it's time to see if we can, to trade and get it.
And Republic, do they want to help or?
No, we don't. We can, it's very expensive to have Republic come and haul us a job.
Can we find somebody else to?
Well, we have, once we get this truck, these guys do it.
They've been doing it now.
They have a C D V drivers that, that take that sludge and dispose of it and it saves us a tremendous amount of money. It's just a matter of that we need a new truck to replace it.
So how long is it going to take us to get a new truck?
Uh, maybe the okay.
I mean, because, you know, I don't want Johnny to be having a hard time and. We need to move on, this is now, tomorrow, tomorrow.
Yeah, that's the diffuser, which we're saying to receive about three hundred thousand. We do have a good estimate. For real, and then the MAC roll-off and two hundred, they're going to.
And then the last thing that we have on there is a C D V G match. We have a grant that we've applied for using, what's the firm's name? Langford, five hundred thousand with a fifty thousand dollar match. And that's going to be able to do new, new sewer lines in the Buttercup, Bluebonnet area. We are fortunate to be still in the running and we're moving the process for it, so. We need to budget the fifty thousand so that when we can get that, we'll match.
So do you want to spend it to get?
That's, that's correct, sir.
Yes, yes. And they have requests for additional information, so they say that is a good thing. They'll not, I, for sure, yes, but.
And what is that on, Cindy?
Sewer to Buttercup and Bluebonnet.
Buttercup, good. But that's.
Buttercup and.
Bluebonnet. Yes, ma'am. The design's already been done, everything is in place, we just need to, they award them a grant.
If they award it, you can build. They are really good. I actually talked to them to see if there's something wrong. I think that we get awarded our way and they showed me our talents and it's because we were awarded before. So we had ten points there when other cities have hadn't been awarded, and so if I got fifty, then we wouldn't say.
So does anybody have any questions or is everybody okay? Y'all are okay, guys? So, y'all have a word? Anybody has any? All right. It's six thirteen and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank y'all and y'all go home or have questions, y'all, I'm out the rest of the week, but I'll be there, buddy.